Hello. All right. You're so chill around here. Not moving. I'm not. Well, not a little. You know, all right. And that's all.
Sure. Morning. Thank you.
I'll be in. You go. He is running.
Yeah.
Yeah. Everyone. All right. You can say. Right. But.
Morning, sir. I'm glad you're here. Morning. Everybody turn your cell phone over to the side. Thank you.
You're doing a good job.
I think I'm on time. I'll take a pause.
All right. And my earphones are very nice and powerful. You know, the back of your jumper is that, right?
Totally. Make sure that they're. We need more screen. That's even better. You're social distance. There. I hope I don't get it there. Go back.
If your stand will begin as word of prayer. Our prayers remain stated for our place. Prayer.
Our God and Father in heaven, we're so grateful to you for the blessings that you provide for us each day. As we begin this reading this morning, Father, we ask that your Holy Spirit is here with us and that it guides us. And our Father, we ask that the court assume the responsibility when we make wrong decisions and make a correct decision, Father, we pray that he get the glory. We're so grateful for the United States, for America. We're grateful that you call me the people of the United States during the final election. And we pray that you continue to walk over the process we're going through. We love you and we thank you for Jesus Christ and in his name we bow for you.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of which saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas. One state under God, one and indivisible. I call to order the regular session of the Vansant County Commissioners Court on Thursday, November the 12th, 2020, at nine oh seven a.m. Announced form is established for all members of the fourth press. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensing for the reading of the minutes of the meetings of the branch court of approval of same for October the 28th, 2020. You have the minutes before you. Got a motion by Commissioner West. Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any corrections or discussion about the minutes? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted. Second, you have a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Brown. Any questions or discussion about the minutes? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying of county bills as submitted. Second, motion by Commissioner Melton, second by Commissioner Brown. Any questions or discussion about the ratifying of county bills? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number five, general business. Any general business? Do we have a special session on the 16th to end the election?
You did a great job.
Yep, you did a good job.
Great job.
Is there any other general business, any announcements or anything needs to be made?
I'd like to find the papers, probably if you all kept in the I don't know, in the situation now.
Joe, I'd like to say, too, our high school football team, we start playoffs this week. They start tonight.
Who's playing?
Grands Lane. We're going after your four major season.
Grands Lane's play isn't bad. Does that come as a surprise?
Right.
Hey, hey, I thought you were a Van thing.
I am. It will be, Martin. Yeah. You can't go in there this way. That's a pity.
I hope the board that enjoys it, please. Yeah. These boards. They're like Gilmore had to put that on.
Any other general business we need to be aware of? There'd be none when we were in public comments, did anyone sign up to speak? I was in public comments. We'll move to item number seven, discuss and consider approval of five thousand dollar bond for Danny Wilson, county fire marshal. Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Melton. He has, but once he got fined, he hasn't been showing again. You got a motion, second, any discussion or questions? Being none, all in favor of approving five thousand dollar bond for Danny Wilson, county fire marshal, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number eight, discuss and approve, discuss and consider approval of county judge declaring that he needs the county fire marshal Danny Wilson with duty to hear an application for permits under chapter 751 of the Texas Health and Safety Code, mask gather, you know, any numbers of masks gathering coming into the county. There's going to be 2,500 people or more. They have to apply for it by days in advance throughout that. Or 500 people. You know, they believe that 51% of them is going to be under the age of 21. And alcohol's going to be served, not the alcohol, we serve them, but alcohol is served there. Then they have to apply for that mask gather. Or we had this with Danny Wilson. Danny Wilson, they go out their check because you're going to have a you're going to have a big party like you know. Then you're going to have to have plans at the place.
Judge, I'll make a motion to approve that. The county fire marshal Danny Wilson, hear the application for the permit.
Okay, you got a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number nine, discuss and consider annual Texas A and M ag life extension program in perpetuation of the 2020 family and community health programs for Vansant County until the fresh report by Melissa Rhodes, Vansant County extension.
Melissa. Welcome. Okay, I don't know, I have to teach your extension, hasn't come forward and do an update for y'all as far as what we've been doing. To kind of simplify, in the past I've done these, you also get these each month from that's from Tony and I send those to you that just kind of tells you what we've been doing. This should have been quite unique for me with all the COVID. So for those of you don't know, I've spent 20 hours a week since April doing COVID tracing until just this last month and we finally got a big relief from those days. So I've done a lot of that over this year. It's taken a lot of time, COVID, all across the state. People and tracing those and reporting back and doing the follow-up calls and so forth. So that's been quite an interesting term for us, it was something the state asked us to do. Most recently, the state has had me get certified to do the COVID testing. So now then I can go into the schools and do rapid COVID testing if they need us. So that's kind of been an interesting term for us because that's never been part of our job, but guess what? We volunteered with the state, so here we are, we're doing it. So that's kind of taken a lot of my time, it's really impacted our programming. As you may or may not know, we got a new director at extension in College Station, Mr. Dr. Jeff Hyde, who comes from Kent State. And he is really wanting to change the direction of extension in a lot of ways. And COVID kind of just gave him a huge jumpstart because one of his priorities was to make us more visual electronically or virtually. And COVID just played right into his cards on that because we've had to turn most, all of our programming into virtual programs. Which within itself has been successful in a lot of ways. I've done a lot of Facebook Live programming this year and so forth. But part of the problem we see, especially in a county like ours, we have a lot of low-income families that live in these housing authorities and things and they don't have access to internet or they don't have a computer to use to watch the programs. Some have, you know, phones, but they're usually very limited on their data, so they don't want to waste their data listening to something that's going to educate them on something, so that's going to get chosen. So we've been really looking at how to address that. Of course, right now I can't go into the housing authorities physically, I'm not allowed to do that for the housing authorities, you know, they don't want any visitors in there doing any kind of programming. So it's kind of made it harder. So this year with my community gardens, since I couldn't go and deliver vegetables to them, we just took them and I delivered them to Manna so they could be distributed. You know, and they've been doing close to 500 families through there. So they've been very appreciative of all the fresh produce and stuff that we've delivered. So I've delivered close to 700 pounds. We didn't have as good a year this year with the garden for a variety of reasons. You know, part of it was people not willing down there and working it like they have in the past because of COVID, not wanting to be around each other and so forth. But overall, it was a success, they had it ready, it's in dormant stage right now to go off in the spring, so they've already figured out what they're going to be planting. And we're planning to start back distributing it again. So that's kind of what's been going on with the community garden. You know, I've still been feeding our families near Vansant County, but you know, it's just a little different approach, I suppose. Other things I've done this year, of course, I try to continually send out Dan, I think, sends out this for me, boards into everybody when I do my quarterly newsletters on health and wellness to our county employees. And then, of course, we did our walk across Texas that I always do with some group every year. And this past year, we did it again with the bank challenge, so I challenged all the financial institutions here in the county to do it. And it was a huge success, they walked a little over almost 7,000 miles this past year when they did it. And so the winning bank, again, was first up, bank of Big Wheeler. I'm telling you, those people, they get out and they're very competitive, they form their team and they get out. You know, a team has eight people on it. And so the team that won it was called Speed Bank. And they, they walked 1,472.87 miles in the eight-week period. So they were getting it the whole time. So the bank's enjoying it, it's a fun, fun time. This year, we had many all the bank also competed, which is a new one that joined out of Grands Lane. So they had several teams and they acquired well. And then Texas Bank Trust also participated and did well. So overall, it was a good, a good program. My programs reach out to, we have about, in here in Vansant County, we have 2,343 county, our, excuse me. In our county, we have 2,343 residents, households that receive some kind of low-income financing, whether it's SNAP or WIC, or they're getting some kind of benefits. Overall, we have 6,405 recipients. So those are the people that a lot of my programming reaches out to. And so I strive to work with the Grands Lane School District, it's really been to work with me. We do a, it's called Balancing Food Lights Program to educate children on how to be more active, cut down on sodas, and reduce screen time. And we implement these lessons, there's 20 lessons, and we do it through the fiscal ed class. And so, and we target the third graders because we feel like that's a ton to get that habit started. And we're in our fourth year of doing that there. So that's been a very successful program. In the meantime, the parents also receive a booklet of information, which we hope at some point maybe helps the parents realize what they need to be doing at home. So promoting health at home as well as in the school. Of course, as y'all know, I also do the 4H, keep that going. We've had a very interesting year with 4H. It's been really hard, most of our events got canceled, you know, y'all know, stock shows, all those things were canceled. We did get to have a few events, Fashion Storyboard was something that was already in place, Kids at R and D Dinner. It's an event where they don't go in person, so they just submit a board to me that's they designed and I take and turn it in for them. Same kind of photography, that or just sending the photography pictures and we're able to send those. So we did really well with those type of events, but most of them got canceled. And right now, we are just scrambling, trying to figure out how to do it this spring for the same very reasons that we were not able to do it this past year. A lot of facilities don't want to commit to us because they don't know where this COVID thing is going and so they just said, no, we'll, we'll commit to you in January or February. And we usually have it in March or April, so we're like, oh, yeah, our parents aren't going to go for that too well. So we're working, we're going hard, trying to figure out what to do. But that's kind of what, what all I've been doing, I'm sure there's probably things I've left off, but you ask these guys, I send in report every month of all the things that I do, but it, it's always something different every day. I never know what's going to happen for the day, but anyway, I appreciate y'all's support and the missions, all y'all do for us and residents of the county and everything that they do to help me make these programs, because I found I couldn't do it. And, you know, so we'll hope to keep working. And I've got a new administration coming in at the sheriff's office and I hope we can get back to helping them with some of their food with the community garden again this year. We did in the past and kind of helped our staff, we would like to do again.
Any, any questions for Melissa?
No, I think they did great.
Thank you, we appreciate it a lot. We did have our hay auction in, for us. And Judge, the cakes sold, they, they did well again. I cut back, I only made two this year. That's one thing I do every year to help raise money and pay for some of the programming that I do is I bake cakes and sell them at the auction at the hay planning every year. And so I sold one for 525 and another sold for 300 this year, so.
525, 525.
Yeah. So anyway, that's how I do it to give money and I'm very gracious that we have businesses around us, support us and do that because I know that money's going to be used to help with our families and get education to the young and so forth.
We could do a great job with this.
Thank y'all.
Appreciate you. And those cakes, even in that price, it was already good.
Exactly.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We built one back. Did that one before one night.
You did up ten for a bit, I'll get to share it with you, thanks. Well, that's your good report from Melissa, they do a lot of good work over there. Item number 10, discuss and consider changes affected January 3rd, 2020 to the sheriff's office and jail budget. Our sheriff elect, Steve Hendricks. His position. Steve, you may.
First, I suppose I say good morning and appreciate you letting me come here today and make this request. And this is the start of what will be a good working relationship with Commissioner's Court and Sheriff's Office. Fully committed to that today and moving forward. So you have before you a packet, you should have already received one. And basically what we're doing here is I've gone through the, we'll start with the jail budget. And I've gone through and taken all these positions. And positions that were not being filled are used, I've used the money from those salaries to basically go through and make sure that we are creatively create some positions that will benefit us and this administration. At the same time, anybody that had grants that were different pay, we equalize them across the board so that if you're a lieutenant, you make the same amount of lieutenant. If you're a transport officer, you make the same as the other transport officer. There's some that were not, not the same pay and I don't think that's fair if you keep everyone the same pay with the rate that they have. Once again, the bottom dollar has not changed, no effects, but the total budget, no effects for taxpayers. It's just basically equalizing the pay and creating positions for, for. It also provides for adequate supervision. In the past, we've had shifts with deputies now with no supervisor, they have nobody to go to when they have a question. What will be done is every shift will have a supervisor, both sergeant. And there'll be three deputies on each shift and that should act and provide adequate supervision and adequate coverage for the county. So if you have any questions, basically each column, it has the current, what it is now, what I'm proposing, and then any difference made. So as one of the operations budget, I limited the captain's position and I used that pay to create lieutenant spots and make their pay off as soon. And once again, there's no way it affects the bottom line.
Does anyone have any questions for Steve? So totally, how many positions are you doing the way we have decisions?
We've done, I'm trying to remember, the two, this is one, two. Three, three positions on the operations side that are eliminated. For example, if you look down there, there's some deputy positions that have been eliminated. But we turned those into sergeant positions, but they can still pay and add up to one name. You'll see.
So in the first floor, I think.
Yeah.
I guess then, peace officers, any positions, you know, where did I see on first page? Just you had done away with it, but you went from 31, 776 to 80, 552.
And that, that position's not been filled in the last three administrations. So what I did was basically just take, took some of the payment from that to create, to increase the pay for the jail lieutenant, the, for what a lieutenant's make, and I increased the jail administrator, will be a chief deputy spot, so he makes the exact same as the chief deputy of operations would make.
So you, on, on the second page, you eliminated two deputy control positions.
Right, eliminated the captain, the lieutenant over necrotic spot, created some lieutenant positions, there'll be basically a lieutenant on that, on that side, lieutenant over CID, who will also be working cases. Lieutenant on patrol, who will be 50% administrative, 50% out on the street. And then we have lieutenant over special services. And what that lieutenant will be doing is taking care of all the things that don't fit with patrol or CID, such as internal affairs investigations, K-9, SWAT, anything that doesn't fit with the others. So we can have these guys focus on CID and focus on patrol, which we've been lacking. We want to build that patrol up and have a strong patrol unit. Responsible systems means you're in Vansant County.
On the second page then, so these, these deputy patrols, that's your good way with position? We, we don't need, you've been unable to fill those positions?
What I've done is taken those two positions, eliminated them, but I created two sergeant spots. So basically, we're just switching and swapping.
That we fill?
Yes, sir. And right now, I can also report that we've had in Boulder, I think, Hershey's County, receive 55 applications right now for total positions in the sheriff's office.
Good, wow.
And we've got more coming in, I understand there's some worry, I can wait and pick up for a lead, so. Lots of current employees will apply, a lot of people from the outside apply. A lot of great qualified people to apply for command decisions. It's always very difficult when you don't have so many qualified people to fly, not just here at the county, but from outside the county, it's as far away as the Rome, Texas, and so. So that's encouraging.
Any other questions for Steve?
Steve, I think it's a minute, that, that, on your paper here, you're going to totally split that, the jail and the assortment, the law enforcement side of it with the jail administrator, now the hall jail.
Yes, and well, actually, there's, there's a little bit of change I'm making, so that the jail chief deputy will be responsible for the jail, he will also be over CID. Because we're going to split that up. What I'm trying to do is create a balance of responsibility, so that one person's not overwhelmed with things. And it also creates a checks and balances by having those two on opposite sides. And everything will fund in one way. There'll be a chain of command, but at the same time, communication will fund in one way, so that, as an example, the CID lieutenant will have been on basis to the DA's office, where they're dealing with one person. And we don't have four or five people running over there turning stuff, we have one key thing, it's in a steady flow. So they, the DA's office will have one person to deal with all the time, turn to the county building.
Any other questions for Steve? Basically, just restructure.
Correct, and once again, it does affect the bottom dollar.
Yeah, it does not affect the bottom dollar. Let's go and get us more. Did you, buddy? No, I didn't, I didn't actually cut that in, but. Steve, we, we had a meeting with Steve, with Sandy and Dan. And when we, we talked with our lawyer before, Steve's not doing anything, he's not the sheriff. He's sheriff of LA, or Steve's not doing anything, we wanted to make sure that everything was okay legally. And so what he's saying is, the day he comes in the office, this is the way he would like to set it up. Robert Davis said he'd see a problem, but Steve come and presented his plan to the commissioner's court. And then if the commissioner's court approved it, then he'd get a green light on January 1st, after he's sworn in, it should.
No, the whole purpose is, it's, it's hard to offer positions, but we know what our positions are going to be, so. I can expect for January 1st that I can go ahead and start offering these spots and get them put in place, so we did the ground run on January 1st. So I'd also like to add that sheriff court now met and we're working on a very smooth transition, so we have the last coverage, the last dispatch, anything like that. Schedule out the first beat in a year, so nothing stops.
I might mostly accept this as a paper of time with a 2021.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, is there a second?
Second, Judge.
Second by Commissioner Brown. Any other questions or discussions? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number 11, discuss and consider authorizing county justice sign lease between county, Vansant County and Kent Civic Center. You have a lease for you. What this is, is Chris had to get, where Chris had to put a plan together. Our Judge Martin had to put a plan together. And present it to the regional judges, over all the judges, and get approval. You know, as of March, or it's like all trials and everything, just pretty well shutting down. What they're wanting to do is have Rader in the civic center over here, where you bring, you bring everyone in, you do your jury selection at the civic center and everything. This is a contract between the county and the, and the city of Canton, well, the civic, the city of Canton with the civic center over there. You can just see. It's a $300 fee to rent there. I spoke to Lonnie Plough, great guy, doing a great job, he said, man, we can't lose money on it, I understand that. But it gives them occupancy spread, like 150 people out for the, you know, social distance and still living for an hour without bringing them in the courthouse and going through that. Once they pick the jury, then they, the trial will be held in the district courtroom upstairs, with just, you know, the people, the jury, whoever they're jurying, the people that attends, but I think, we, I think everything's good. But what this is, you know, the city, they, they've restructured their contracts with the civic center. over certain, you know, the past experience, and, so.
Is this a one-year contract?
No, it's a one event.
One event contract?
For, I mean, it's for one day, uh, November the sixteenth, from eight AM to sixteen, and they're going to bring everyone in, the attorneys will be there, do the board hour, keep everything real, we were, I think they're, uh, wanting to work with, uh, they're, we're going to have to set it up, write it back, clean it up, but I thought, I thought, uh, the city of Canton has been very, very gracious, and, and very, very, and you couldn't ask me to go any further than that, about that, about two hundred dollars, and you can, and what they're doing, they go figure out a part of the trial. But, it's a trial they're going to do, and they're going to look, uh, Judge Winters, Judge Martin, and, uh, Condon, and everybody's going to monitor it, there's always improvement, if you run through something, you can come, always come back, say, okay, we can do this a little better, this a little better, we need to do that, and, uh, but that's what they, uh, that's the contract, but.
So, Mr. Pearson.
Say, motion by Commissioner.
Second, good.
Pearson, got two seconds. Uh, guy, commer, motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Mountain. Any other questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twelve, discuss and consider Vansett County road and bridge recent forward purchasing, is that a motor grader?
Motor grader.
Grader. Jim, if you want to cover that.
Well, this, of course, motor grader is, uh, the most important piece of equipment we have as far as laying down our product out there on the roads, and, uh, ours is, uh, not quite as old as maybe, but it's, and, uh, we're getting to the point where we're spending more on trying to maintain it and, and we're going to buy a new one, so, uh, that's, that's, uh, what we're going to do, we, we need to buy a new motor grader. We have, uh, looked at three different ones, we've kind of come up with the one that we want, I've got the price in line, Sandy said we hadn't had any enough money to get it, uh, but we're going to pay cash for it when it comes next, and so.
So, that, then, the, the motion will be to go out for bids?
Yes.
To have, not the money?
Actually, uh, it's going to be bought through the.
By order.
So, they, they, they'll have to do, you know, that's right.
Okay. Okay, is that a motion, Tim?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Pearson, to allow Tim to purchase a motor grader from the by order. Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider placing no crew truck signs on Vansett County road twenty-one, forty-one, twenty-one, forty-two, twenty-one, nine, ten.
Yes, yes, there's, these, these roads here are heavily trafficked by eighteen-wheelers and twin screw trucks and, and wearing on these roads, because they're using these roads, uh, basically, basically to haul from Interstate twenty and cut through these county roads to two forty-three. And it's one of the roads, uh, Commissioner Pearson and I shared, and he's agreed to, uh, leave the signs up there too, so. Need these signs to, to make these trucks take the state highways to get to the project, to use these county roads, go back and forth, back and forth. So, I make a motion that, uh, we would accept this.
Second. Got motion by Commissioner Mountain, second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion?
Virgil came and asked me about this, and I said, Virgil, I'll tell you about how I'm for, countywide, no crew trucks, and countywide, thirty-five mile. But I'm not there yet.
Any other question, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider approving these Texas and states paying one flat in precinct three, is that yours, Keith?
Yes, mine, and, and, uh, this is phase one, it's four-locked subdivision, uh, they're all greater than one acre, and it's, it's all retirement, no road, then they're up, uh, John's corner of two county roads, thirty-five, ten, thirty-five, thirteen, will I make a motion, will we approve?
Second. Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Brown.
I have a idea of any, uh, any, anybody else would like to, to look at, but it looks good.
Any questions or discussion?
If we had a new subdivision plan, we wouldn't have to have this.
That's correct, because it'd be on the court.
That's right.
It's not covered, we're not trying to get you down.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider approval of twenty-twenty budget amendment. Item number fifteen, there is not anymore. Those who will pass item number fifteen, move to item number sixteen, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget. Got a motion by Commissioner Brown, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion about the budget? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number seventeen, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices and departments, county government, and approval entry of same reports submitted as a matter of record. Do you get all your reports, Tim?
I got nine in, uh, that's good, for first time in years, so we'll be in great shape on the twenty-fifth.
Okay. Is our motion approved, those monthly?
So, the.
Got motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Mountain, any questions or discussion on your reports? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, yes.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second, second by Commissioner Brown, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.
Better than yesterday.
I couldn't believe it, uh, I, I said, yeah, uh, uh, story, I mean, you clearly asked your, your jury, your jury selection.
Okay.